Welcome to the February 7th Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I ask that everybody please rise for respect and allegiance and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. As you said, we are at the February 7th Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting. First item on our agenda, as the board had a change agreement from January 7th.
Yes.
Okay, we have one correction. Could you get the one correct? Okay, there was Mr. Pastel, which is on page eight regarding forty-four. He had just had suggested that it's the board.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll vote for motion to accept the minutes, to the amended minutes from January 7th.
One second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Administrative business of Berry Towns House has satisfied their SRA, so that's easy. First item on the registered agenda, report ARB signage review of documents submitted for ARB proposed series signage located in the building 30, within the shops at Woodbury Shopping Center, said property is located in intersection of Los Lanes and Ralph Lauren Center Valley, and is known as Village of Berry Tax Cuts, Section 225, Lot 1 on thirty-four dot one, thirty-four dot two, two, and seven five.
Good evening. Good evening.
So just a quick synopsis of what we're here for.
Sure. So, um, the first application for signage.
May I take this?
The first application for signage at the property, Six Los Lanes, has already been approved. That's for their as-of-right signage, and this application is to seek approval for a second signage.
Okay. Jay, what's your?
We got to Jay. That's okay. On this signage, at the April thirteenth, two thousand and three ARB meeting, the applicant depicted one sign, forty-five point eight-one square feet, on the east facade. Now there's depicting an additional sign on the south facade. The, if you go into the code sign, the code signage table, it permits wall signs in IB zone having up to ten percent of total wall area and one per use. The applicant has proposed two wall signs. The plan is non-compliant and should seek relief. ARB, according to the code, compatible with surroundings and appropriate architectural character, we recommend that the board determine if this applicant's proposal is satisfactory. On the SECR, this is just a repeat about the two wall-mounted signs. And again, this is in the referrals, we recommend a zoning board referral due to the signed quantity.
Any questions for Jeff, Jay, Jim, Jack? I am straightforward, I wanted a second wall sign to the establishment. I don't really see, I don't really see the issue. I think they can wait the public here, right? I'm making a motion to wait the public here for a second. Questions? Oh, question. Sorry, sorry.
I forgot. Are there any mine in the sign that everyone hears?
Of the complex?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in front of the ZBA right now before.
No, they, they got it.
Like.
The multi-tenant directory sign that was like not quite a lollipop, but came up to the sign.
There is a lot of fun. It's like a stone.
So if they do have, like, they would call, would it be the same? The design?
I would imagine their brand could be all the same, of course, with signage, right?
The mine.
Come on, we want outside of the.
Yeah, the, if the tenant panel is approved, it's not part of this application, but yeah, the tenant panel would be representative of the, of the other brand signage.
Okay.
Sounds good, okay. All in favor?
I just pulled up the ARB approval for the tenant sign, and it is the triple A. They can fold it in there. It looks like that.
The pepper? The pepper.
That's their, that's their brand, that's something. I'll vote, make a motion to have Jeff, Jay, or in this case, Jim, make a referral to the ZBA for the second wall sign.
One second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I have a brief second, is it type two of SECR, right? I'm making a motion to have this as type two of SECR.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing, GMO, we take care of lot of building apartment, and.
Do you want for whenever they come back to have a draft before you do that, but like obviously you don't have to act on it then, but.
Yeah, we can't anyway until we get the two very hard back in, right, yourself, we'll leave you down with that. So I'll vote for motion to have council draft, 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 draft resolution approved.
Sure.
Any questions? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
So you know your next step is to go to the ZBA?
Yes. Thank you.
Alright. Next item on our agenda, fifty Smith Clove Roads, where we will discuss, we've lost documents submitted for proposed segments, but determined ARB and order following technical requests, or change to use of from a long distance apartment, said property is located in fifty Smith Clove Road, Center Valley, is known as Village of Berry Tax Cuts, Section two one three, two three one, block three, block three.
Hello, board members. So we're back to clarify a few items on this project that I'll. David Nimakgo, architectural firm representing the project. And at the last time we had met, I believe we were near conclusion of the project, near approval, but the question of the second floor of fifty Smith Clove had come up, what use is existing? And we verified that it, there is an apartment, so that would require two additional parking spaces. As a result, we removed the stone steps that are in the other building to the southwest of the existing building. Removed it to the southeast to allow for two parking spaces that would satisfy that requirement. Along with that, we are proposing a timber guide rail along the creek there, so that just for a barrier associated with those two spaces, I, we thought would be a good idea. There is a separate entrance to the second floor, so we would not be, which is in the back, and so we would not be proposing any changes to the front. Did we receive H2M's comment letter? Actually, I believe on page two, the review of submitted materials in paragraph C, that they're in agreement that we do comply with the zoning code, and I believe all the other items were informational or repeat of our previous submission. So, you know, I'm here to entertain any questions, but I'm hoping the board would see that we're clear to sign, draft a final resolution.
Jay?
Okay. Yeah, the public hearing needs to, remains to be scheduled. On the bulk table, the applicant received a variance from the ZBA on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, for a lot area where at the time, two, twenty-two thousand square feet was required, and eleven thousand seven hundred fifty-three square feet was provided. The current proposal requires fifteen thousand square feet, where again, eleven thousand seven hundred fifty-three square feet is provided. Degree of variance is less than what was originally authorized by the ZBA, so we presume no further variance is needed, but we recommend council confirms that.
Wait, that was the lot area.
I'm sorry?
I think I talked to Caleb about that earlier.
Okay.
So it's, they're fine. The variance doesn't grant anything.
The applicant, in order to, to build the proposed parking, the applicant proposes to eliminate a small landscaped area. In doing so, this will increase the proposed coverage of the site. The applicant should provide revised plans offsetting the impervious area created by the construction of the parking area, or seek relief.
We're relocating it, so, you know, I'm.
Okay.
I'm thinking it's a, it's a wash, because we're taking it from that southwest portion, and just moving it to the southeast to the back of the building.
Okay, if you could provide revised plans depicting the square footage change.
Square, okay. Which paragraph was that?
This is under one B, I, I two.
Thank you.
Okay. This is more informational. The proposed parking area is to remain gravel without any striping delineating the stalls. The code does not require any specific improvements. We defer to the planning board whether this is adequate, or you need input from your traffic consultant for the delineation of the stalls.
I think facility has been stalls on gravel, coming on the first time in collateral or anything like that, so. Yeah, I think we talked about, I think we talked about stopping, keeping the gravel stepped.
Under.
Thank you.
Under the HB zone, although it appear that proposed residential use would be complying at the appropriate time, the applicant should certify compliance with the code requirements for HB performance standards.
How do, what form would that take so that we can provide that certification? Is it a, you know, a letter, a document on our letterhead just certifying that compliance?
Yeah, you could list the sections of the code and where you're complying. There's quite a number of them, you know, noise, rooftop units, heights, things like that, because it's at the HB zone. So if you could just certify that you're going to comply with them, or it's not applicable. Many, most of them are not applicable.
Yeah, I don't think if you're not like, if you're not preventing that from anything, you're not having a good machinery with the law itself going out, like noise, sound pollution. Yeah, it's just simple, then, really what I would do is copy and paste that section, go down, and just go to each, or what I have in view, not after the call, or apply with.
Okay.
Under site plan, the applicant reviewed the requirements of the code, and is seek relief or waivers from a number of sections. In our opinion, we don't feel that most of these sections actually apply, so I don't necessarily, do you want me to read them?
No.
Okay.
I'll spare it, but I don't want to.
Okay. So under utilities, basically under the water and sewer section, the first floor, first floor plan was provided, but we have not received the second floor plan. And we'd like to have clarification on the existing floor, first floor plan. It appears that there's an increase in the number of bedrooms.
Okay, so that's on A, A one?
This is still on the same page under A. But what was written is, is actually, there's a slight error in this. What's written is, is although the plans have reduced the number of apartments, they propose the number of bedrooms remain the same. From what we can tell, there's actually an addition of one bedroom. For that.
Okay. Got it.
Under E of that section, refuge.
Yes.
The existing dumpster will be removed, but the applicant now is proposing separate garbage cans, and we recommend that you show where the garbage cans will be on the plan.
Not a problem.
Under section three of the report on the repairing area, the code prohibits clearing and land disturbance in the unpaved areas of a repairing zone with exceptions. The applicant proposes to eliminate the landscape and concrete pad areas for gravel parking. We defer to the board to consider whether that's acceptable.
Yeah, so we talked about this, I think, a couple times now, and I reckon a couple weeks ago, with, really, I think right now we're just, um, so, which I presume we can take it out, right?
Correct.
So that would leave nothing between the creek and the parking lot? So, I mean, it's just really posted, probably need by the, since that's exposed, and treated with wood, right?
A timber rail.
Timber rail. So we just haven't decided we're okay with that, so, like, tell us.
Right, and under your code, it actually says that you consider that after the public hearing. Which is odd, but that's.
So we'll talk about it now.
If you have thoughts, I think that David is happy to hear them.
I, I would take an exception to that, not really too much, that's not a big, I'm trying to.
It'll just be post.
Post holes. Even though we're not allowed to talk about it, any feedback here, after, should we just continue with the, I don't anticipate it being a problem.
Thank you.
Under floodplains, FEMA mapping indicates the site is located within the special flood area, and portions of are in floodway.
Yeah.
As per the code, permits are required for construction and other development within the special flood area. If you choose to approve the application, we recommend as a condition you acquire a floodplain development permit from the building's.
Yes.
Under ARB, the applicant should confirm whether the window replacement will have the same visual appearance for the board to consider whether this modification fits within the exemption of the code.
I think we talked about this, right, that you're drawing, you're going to replace this app, what's there, what's there, right?
Exactly.
So just, should we make that a condition, tell us if it's valid?
It's just replace it, um.
Yeah.
Is it just, how many windows is it?
It's.
How about any windows in case, sorry?
It's a door and like the.
Two store.
Display, the side.
Yes.
Floor plans, that's just a kind of a revisit of what we had stated before about getting this, the floor plan for this second floor.
Not a problem. Yes.
Under easements, a twenty-foot easement across is the property, the easement should be provided to council to review any restrictions.
Yes, please.
GMO referral. The applicant provided correspondence in reply to Orange County DPW. The applicant should provide a response from the county over the SECR. And on the SECR, you may wish to request the applicant include a note on their plans indicating compliance with treaty clearing restrictions imposed by the D E C on the northern Long Year Back.
That's the whole restriction.
Yeah, it's a type-two action, but I don't think that the applicant's really clearing here, because it's in this zone, so I think it makes sense just to cover the races, without the eyes crossed, we can include it, they're not taking any now.
Is there any trees on that side?
Wrong.
That's, that's one condition the applicant would be happy on.
Thank you.
Forget the ready to change, so. Any questions for Jim? I think because this is in the, uh, public here, right? So I'll vote for motion to schedule that for our. How could we even take a second for stuff?
When do you want it?
If we do the twenty-first, it has to happen by Friday.
By this Friday?
This Friday. Otherwise, we're going to be waiting until the twentieth of March.
Yeah, we'll have to do the twentieth of March. There's no way I'll get, no way I'll get it.
I want to give, I want to give you the.
I appreciate it, yeah. We'll go with March twentieth.
Okay, so I'll vote for motion to have the public here in March. One second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I want a motion to have this as type two of SECR. Seven. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I also vote for motion to have council directly, reservation approval, trans-reservation approval. One second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Maybe comes up, uh, here, we can answer that, and then for what, so, we're not asking.
Thank you. Have a. Have a good evening, everyone.
Green Balloon, right?
What?
Green balloon.
Green, green, yeah, see, I was. I'm going to bring them. Alright, the red ones are gone. Moving, chugging alone tonight. Alright, I'm going to, so the name on my college has advanced, I believe it's Indic, ARB forty-one, bill of value, reviewing discussed documents submitted for ARB, proposed addition renovations with existing affected dwelling, said property is located at forty-one, the.
Good evening. My name is Yol Ekstein. I'm here for Indic. We are proposing here a, an addition to existing house. Existing house is a small house, small house, kitchen dining room, four bedrooms, two baths, I believe. And then we are proposing a large addition in the back of the, back of the house. And we are going to rearrange the entire unit, so we'll have a large, large kitchen and dining room, with our living room, study. We'll have a home office and three regular bedrooms, and then we adding a new master suite on the, on the second floor, second floor of the addition. And then we'll have a playroom in the basement and an exercise room, music room, that's in the basement. That's, this is what the project will assist to.
So are you keeping the right side of the building? Because it says for existing and, oh, so you're keeping the right side of the building and adding everything else to the left, or is it a complete?
Again, can you, can you zoom out a little bit, so?
Up or down, if you want me to?
So the, the right side is existing, we keep it.
You are, so you are keeping the right side?
Yes. That's the, the right side is the existing part, and then we adding the left side. So this, this all stays.
This, over here, you're keeping?
We're keeping all of this. The addition is in the back.
Okay. It's, yeah, I think you weigh the picture, there's not a kind of picture of the house.
Right, right. So we're keeping this entire thing, and then in the back of this will be the addition.
Okay. Questions for the applicant?
So this is, this lower right.
This is the rear, right?
This is the rear, yes, so this is where the addition is coming.
This is, this is all, this is all going away, right?
This is gone, yes. Yep. This is the existing right side of the house, and the addition goes to the back.
So the right side, head side is staying still?
Yes, everything stays.
Questions for the applicant? Mr. Kim?
Okay, under zoning, bulk, the area, according to the survey prepared in two thousand and twenty-three, the lot size is little over an acre. This is undersized for the R two A zone, which requires a two-acre minimum. We defer to the building inspector to find whether this is a pre-existing approved, approved lot by now.
Those are pre-existing, non-formal, so you say?
We, we didn't confirm, but we, we refer, we're going to refer to building inspector for that, because we weren't sure, couldn't get information. Under the side yard setback, one side yard is twenty-eight point six feet, and is less than a minimum requirement of thirty feet. The side yard setback should be measured from the closest point of the building to the property. The applicant should revise the plan showing that.
So the, the dimension to the, the dimension to the house is twenty-eight feet, I believe, right?
Dimension to the house is twenty-eight feet, yes.
Right, so.
Twenty-eight point six.
Right, so I believe that, we'll have to adjust this. I don't think that they'll want to go to ZBA for this, but we'll have to adjust the plan to make it thirty feet.
Okay. So you're going to revise the.
Yes.
Form instead of trying to.
Right, I believe so.
Well, that, that was why I was going to say. We've got nothing to say.
No, we're going to height now, right, and then?
Yes.
We also, we also have an issue with the, with the deck, I believe, right, the covered deck.
The covered deck, yes. So, well, the height, we could just mention that. Based on the measurements, it appears that they comply, but there's two ways of measuring the building height. And, you know, we defer to the building inspector to actually, to reaffirm what we feel is actually complying. Because if you measure, you can measure it from the, from the driveway up and the middle of the gables. We, we take it still thirty, over thirty feet, but we like to make sure.
So, I mean, if the.
There's two ways of measuring the building height. So the building height, in the codes, is a heightened feat of protection determined from the data established by the average elevation of paved air, open areas which are suitable for approach of fire truck equipment and curb levels where established, vaults of which are fifty feet of the exterior walls of the building. Such height shall be measured from such data to the highest level of a flat or mangeric roof, or to the average height of a pitch, gable, or hip, or gamble roof, excluding bulkheads or other roof construction.
Okay, so this is to the, this is to the average roof, the way we show it.
That's what you're showing there, right, there is.
Right. So the bottom.
And you measure it from the side, which has a pathway.
Right, and it goes all the way down to the, to the pathway, right?
Right.
Okay, so in the maximum, it's thirty-five feet, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, if it goes out, so the question is if we have to measure it more far, far away from.
If you measure it from the driveway, would you worry the fire equipment would come up?
Right.
Then you measure up from there.
Okay, so it's a pretty flat property, I believe, so either way, I believe we'll be okay, but we can.
I think you are, but you, you have to show.
Okay, sure. Okay, we'll show it.
Under decks, there are two covered decks are proposed. The applicant should add the dimensions to the plan and confirm compliance with the code. Under accessory, accessory structures, the applicant should confirm if the existing structures, there's an animal pen that's shown on, on the plans, if that's going to be proposed or removed.
That's being removed. We don't see it on the proposed, right? It's on the, it's only on existing, right here, it's, it's not here.
Right, but the, the sand play area, that's staying.
That's staying, good.
That kind of is an accessory structure?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right sheet.
Oh, okay.
That the one sheet has the play area and the animal pen, and the next sheet has just players on.
Right, so this is, this is the proposed, that's why it's only, there's only, it only shows the. Right, so this is, this is the proposed, that's why it's only, there's only, it only shows the sand play area. But on the, on the existing survey, you'll see that, there you go. All right, sure. So this is, this is the animal pen, so that's, that's being removed.
You've got a place to put a kid if you need to do that.
But it's put in this sand play pen.
I was gonna say, you can't consider a sand play section. You have the house and the roof there, you'd be perfect. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, under ARB, uh, the applicants provided photographs, um, and, uh, for information on the gra- gross floor area for two homes on Millvale Lane. Uh, one is 52 feet and one's 160 feet away from the subject home. For you to consider a similarity and dissimilarity criteria in code. The subject home is 99.6% larger than the smallest comparable home and 14.1% larger than the largest comparable home. Comparison, I'm not gonna show. We also recommend the applicant provide dimensions on the floor plans and a comparison table of floor areas for both proposed and existing.
What do you mean by comparison table?
Dimensions of the floor, you know, the square footage and...
Of the actual floor, the, the floor area?
Of the floor, yeah, the interior floor.
All right, so the existing and the proposed, okay.
Under, under rendering, um, actually, I think you've actually covered that. The rendering in the back, it's unclear whether that existing deck is gonna remain.
Okay.
I think you just stated that's to be removed.
It's being removed, yes.
Because you couldn't see the existing home in that rendering.
Right.
You said that new proposed.
Right.
Yeah, he, he, yeah, he said, he said this was going.
Sure.
This is all, this is all on the line.
Correct.
And higher ground line.
The applicant proposes three new dormers and a flat covered porch roof as part of the addition. Uh, we recommend you consider the similarity and dis- similarity criteria in code for the exterior facade, including but not limited to building materials, mass, roofline, architectural style, and authenticity, color, size, portions, roof design, and height.
And I think the only thing with the colors is the white.
Yes, and the colors delight.
Ah, nobody else? Does that change?
We'll get it changed.
Is that gonna continue for, I know the, the front of the house is not gonna be touched, but are you continuing those colors? Are you just gonna have blue and not white?
Are you deciding the whole house?
I believe, I believe, um, we'll re-size the, the entire house. Let me ask you about the, about the white. Is the, is the white a problem in the back as well, or only in the front?
I haven't looked at the code, actually. I don't think it specifies.
It does, I, I don't think so. It does, so I just said that it's out, like in which presence?
Right.
Out. Green?
Yeah, to blend into the natural environment.
Okay.
We're not, you know, we're not looking for forest green or, or brown or anything like that.
We'll update it. We'll update it.
And I raised that because just looking at one of those photos, it did look like there was some roof damage by the chimney, so I figured they would probably be fixing that, and I...
Do you think?
Just making sure.
It appears the existing structure is a four-bedroom home, as there is an existing music room, which would take the form of a bedroom as it has a closet. The projected water sewer demand form indicates no additional bedrooms or proposed. The floor plan includes a master bedroom, which would now increase bedrooms up to five. Recommend you confirm the intent of the space and discuss with counsel if the action is necessary.
So this came up in a, not one of your applications, but another applicant's application, when building inspector had written an opinion that a room has a closet, like a music room does, you can consider the bedroom.
Ah, so...
Take the closet out or it's a five-bedroom home?
They're not gonna have a bedroom in the basement here, so we'll take the closet out.
Do a good...
I know, and more, be like this.
I'm not sure what that, what those traces are. Those are probably from a chimney. I guess that's gonna stay, but we'll have, we'll have an dent in the room.
Uh, just reading some minor, rich preservation, the applicant shows, um, a photo of the intersection of Millvale Lane and Route 44, facing the general direction of the home proposed addition. The home is not visible during leak on condition. We recommend you consider what additional information is necessary. Per typical practice, um, the non-reflective windows are a requirement of the code, and we recommend this requirement, including any condition of, of any action.
I, um, you mentioned, what did you mention about the covered deck? Just that it's too close to the property, or I missed that, sorry?
Well, if you measure it from the, the covered deck, it's even closer to the 28.6 feet.
So that was your comment, okay.
So that would, that would even make it more...
Sure.
Not compliant.
So we'll leave the deck, we'll just remove the roof over.
So the basement is for me?
Excuse me?
The basement is huge, unfinished.
The unfinished bed, the exist- yes. So they don't need the space right now, they have enough space in the house upstairs.
So what we, what, the planning where the starting building is in condition that we're not regaining progress in the basement?
Okay.
Am I okay with that?
I believe so.
Anybody have any other questions in concern with the public?
Just wanna note one thing. I know the applicant said he doesn't wanna go to the ZBA, so he'll make the, um, addition comply with the side yard setback. That when it complies with the side yard setback, it actually has to be what the bulk requirement is. It can't just be equal to what is existing. So if what's existing is the 28.6, then it would need to be the 30, so it's a little offset, but I just wanted to make sure, so he doesn't come back with that.
Can I check, can I see the site, the site of the survey?
The non-compliments and the new additions.
It's 30, we still have, the old, the existing is 30 feet?
Yeah, it's the, it's the...
38 feet? What is it?
The new addition part is 30.
Right, but the existing is more than, is complying, right? So we don't have this situation anyway, right?
Right, they told me on the...
Okay, sure. But you need to go, you need to go to the ZBA even if the existing is not complying?
No, if, if you're keeping it and if you're not...
Oh, okay.
Then you're fine. I just had the numbers flipped.
Sure, okay.
That's why I started off the conversation, but you're keeping that side of the floor, and you're taking it down. If you're taking it down, then you don't have a lot, that's what I was saying.
Right, right, okay, got it.
So it's that long corners, kind of?
Yes.
Now they get a curve, now they get a curve, they get a curve for it, right? They're gonna curve them in one of those curve for it, and they, they get the 30 feet.
Well, either...
You'll get the 30 feet.
Either that, or we're gonna bolt shift entire, entire wall in, I don't know.
I think there's, there, when you do the updated plans, also, there's a deck there, and you're taking the cover off of it. Second floor decks have to be 20 feet, is it, from a property line, so just make sure that one's left. It might be in your memo.
The...
You show the measurements to...
So this is, this is the first floor deck, isn't it?
Is that the first floor? I thought there was a second.
There is a second floor.
Wait, oh, this one, okay, this one is this, this one is setting to the building.
Oh.
That's the back, that's the back of the property, yes. If you go to the site plan, you can see that there. Survey.
So this is, this is going to the first floor?
Yeah, we're not talking about this one, this is the first floor.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's the first floor. And the other one is...
It's in the rear.
Uh, that, right there, uh, this one here. Show you here.
Picture.
This one.
Oh, it's up there, okay. Sorry.
So last one, it's got a 20.
Right, but this is inside the building and...
It's on the rear, then he's so far away, he just needs to worry about it.
Right.
I thought it was on...
Uh, also, we also have a, a typo on the book table, it says 80 feet instead of 50 feet.
Well, we're good there, then. Just trying to head off some problems before we...
Sure.
Just, I ask, when you do, read through the renderings, is it possible for you to just left, right, front, rear?
We'll make better pictures.
Yeah, just so it's not like a...
Sure.
So you can see each side.
Like the, the front elevation, okay.
Yeah, that is fine. And you'll fix it how it is then?
Yes.
Public hearing, yay, yay. If you want a public hearing, you can. You're going without a public hearing or?
No, I don't have it for sure.
Then you should have one.
I think we should have one.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with that, just because that may look a little mixed, like with housing and stuff like that.
Makes sense.
Could you have everything done, so we could put you in for March?
Um, when is that?
Uh, it would be March 20th in the public hearing.
March 20?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're making ready.
Have everything done by then?
Yep.
Two weeks before that?
March 6.
March 6?
You'd have to have everything in March 6?
Yeah. We'll have it done.
Okay. So I'll overvote for stable, uh, public hearing for our March 20th. Any questions? All favor? I have none. I don't have any, maybe I have any feedback from the chair? Our vote should type in fact, you want to see?
Second.
Second, any questions?
No.
All favor?
All right.
All right, so revision's in by March 6th, and then we'll see you on the 20th.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Last but certainly not least. Island Hills Route 7, two documents for subdivision site plan, special permit in areas of both the 4th and 5th House. Project located on East Side Route 32, near the intersection of Flair and Highland Hills. Set property known as Village of Earth, section 208, Lot 2, Lot 7, on Temple, 11, and 13.
Good evening, George Lithgow, J&amp;G Law, for the applicant, together with Joe Fowle, the, uh, project engineer, Peter Zachary Fowle. We have been before your board numerous times. I'll just go over briefly the last year. Uh, we came in in August, at the August 16th meeting. Uh, we presented you with the sewer agreement that we worked out with the village. You went through the secret part two, made determinations as to impacts. You identified some small, moderate impacts that needed to be addressed in the, uh, part three narrative. We went to work on that, uh, but we also went to work on the issue of recharging freshwater wetlands. Uh, that was identified as a concern by your project, uh, by your engineer. We had a hydrologist look at it, that came to the, uh, November 1st meeting. At that meeting, uh, we presented the report. We gave you a summary of what the engineer had, uh, the hydrologist had looked at. Mr. George, the, uh, the wetland specialist, discussed it. And basically, it's a perched wetland, it is not recharging. That was identified a couple of weeks, uh, that your village consulting hydrologist was asked to review that report. He did concur with the conclusions. I believe that was April, uh, November 8th or 9th. And, uh, we were hoping to be on the agenda for your meeting on the 15th. Fortunately, we did make it, but we did submit for that, and we submitted all that information that was requested, uh, including the part three narrative. And, uh, we hope to be on the agenda as soon as possible, and we're here. We thank you for putting this, I'm sure you're not having the meeting just for us, but we thank you for the opportunity to appear. It's been a long time. I think we're pretty much at the point where you can consider, uh, making a determination of significance. You will obviously wanna hear from your consultants first. But we've been through a lot of work over the last year and a half. If you'd like, uh, Joe can give you a brief overview, um, I think everybody's generally familiar with the project. But, uh, would you like...
You're fresh on the project, because everybody pretty much...
This is a little bit of the rest, I'm sorry.
Well, the, the last year of the big outstanding was the, um, wetlands, and the wetlands was recharging. The, the author first there, the two hydrogeologists went back and forth and determined that it's not recharging the wetlands. And our, our hydrogeologist agrees with their hydrogeologist's findings that it's not recharging the wetlands. That was like the last big thing we kind of had. Other than that, that doesn't mean this plan has changed, did you guys?
Nothing in the plan has changed. We have clarified some of the information that was presented. Uh, there's a couple of items in the engineer report that, uh, Joe can talk to after your engineer discusses it.
I was just trying to break the last big thing, I know there's lots of small, not small, but other items still hanging around. The last big thing is what we...
That was the major issue, uh, I think, for environmental concerns.
Environmental, right.
And just, just to reframe this, we're not here for site plan approval.
No, no, we're just, we, you need a determination, let's see if we're so that we can move forward.
With the village board and get, see if we get this on, correct.
This all would depend on what they...
Very true.
Yeah, so tonight, really, but we're, I mean, I'm not cutting Jim short, but this board is real. But Jim, if tonight, since we wanna make a determination of significance on the secret, so that the doctor can then proceed forward with, um, the work we need to do with the village board as far as, uh, more... Don't you, don't you move away.
So, Jim?
Don't you?
Then, then we'll be back to you for site.
Then you'll be back to us.
And we've, we've worked from a conceptual plan to one that's pretty close to being ready.
Did you sound about very well, I think, uh?
I think so.
Jim?
Okay, as the board mentioned, that the comments that we had were just to, um, allow for the conclusion of decisions believed is a secret and is unchanged. Under, under the wetlands, uh... The Army Corps of Engineers has the jurisdictional determination on the wetlands that are on the site, as previously stated. The applicant also submitted material stating DEC requested a minimal, minimal buffer to be provided at the wetland. At that time, we had requested a written correspondence from DEC's determination and findings, but the applicant says that the DEC will not provide no action correspondence. We advise the applicant to define the minimum buffer requested by the DEC, and the most recent submission, the applicant stated a no-formal buffer. Buffer had been discussed, and the DEC has requested that the applicant provide as much buffer as practically possible. Uh, we recommend the applicant request written correspondence from DEC defining the buffer for some more clarification on what's practically possible.
Just meaning words practically possible.
We require, we previously requested the associated mapping, which was provided, um, that the plan should be signed and sealed. We have, we have a, a survey, we have a survey that it's not signed and sealed that was submitted for the jurisdictional determination showing the, um, the wetland boundaries.
That's not a problem. I have that.
We got, I think we got something very full about that.
Yeah, I apologize for that, but we'll be able to handle it. It came to my desk after noon.
Okay, so easements. Appendix F contains plans showing deductions for easements. We don't think this is a major thing, but the applicant should provide updated plans and calculations to include the portion of the easement southeast of the proposed lot line not uncovered by the 100-year flood plan.
I, I will go through those numbers again, but I'm positive that the site numbers are quite high. I'll do that again.
Uh, as, as discussed and previously determined, the village's hydrologist reviewed, uh, the analysis and concluded that, uh, the site is not hydrologically connected to the sand and gravel. Aqua fern is not recharging the underground water resources in the area. We just... We just like noted that if there are private wells are proposed in the future, for some reason, there's not enough water supply or expansion, then, that the water's supply assessment will be required, because it's not being recharged by the site. So the applicant provided a proposed zone change plan indicating areas to be combined with lot two eighteen dash two dash one oh three, and rezoned to the R one A zone. We note that this part of the subdivision resolves encroachments for the subject property, but modifies existing non-conformities for that lot. The applicant advises any non-conformities will be less based on the additional area. Nonetheless, this should be reviewed by council.
And we did provide, did show the setbacks existing proposals on the adjacent line, you know, to show that the non-conformities are less, so we illustrated that. Yeah, have you seen?
And you will certainly have the opportunity to verify that during the site plan.
No, I was just saying, we'll all come up with an answer.
Oh, yes. Deja vu will be prevalent.
Jim Dooley noted?
Under secret, construction on slopes greater than fifteen percent, the applicant provided a plan showing where slopes are greater than fifteen percent, fifteen percent exist. In appendix F, you may wish to consider that when the applicant responds. Stabilization should be required after, so the applicant is proposing to construct this in three phases, so stabilization should be required after each phase is completed. The applicant's narrative demonstrates intent to comply, we recommend you discuss with council whether any reasonable conditions are part of your action at the appropriate time.
And so, during site plan?
Well, there's some things that, actually, I think both George and Joe are familiar that I usually include as typical conditions for things like that, some of the older site plan, but some I think are more secret related and are really more basic, and some recommendations from DEC, things like that. Obviously, I'd put any of that in bold italics, agree to consider if you want it, but, so some of it I think would be included, but some of it would be per site.
Okay.
So, in the impacts of surface water in the secret document, the new water bodies can be created, so according to secret guidance, and view of part two AFS for severity to impacts, the new water bodies can be created by damming streams, rivers, channeling water from wetlands, or even surface water by grading and land shaping activities that create new bases for water. The applicant proposes construction of a new stormwater detention pond as part of the swept, this should be provided, the swept should be provided at the appropriate time, which I believe they're gonna do with the next step. As of today, the village provided H two M with the water capacity data, which we can relay to the applicant to confirm that they, you know, that you comply. There's some administrative legal things that we noticed that I really wanted to defer to council about.
These are very difficult petitions, and there's so many parcels, several bits and pieces, and prior to your last meeting, not to cut you off. Prior to your last meeting, I had requested entry disclosure forms, orders, endorsements, things like that from the applicant, which have been provided, so I think that takes care of some of them, but it's really just making sure it's all set in the final documents. But since I have the mic, and it's my turn, I just had one update. Last time, there was an issue regarding the legal ability to expand the water district, and I said we worked that out prior to your next meeting. So those doesn't have the ability to expand a water district, legally, they don't have that ability. However, part of this is within that district, so essentially, any housing unit that is located outside of that district will just have to have an out-of-district user agreement. This is not a heavy load for anything, but I just wanted it noted because that wasn't actually in the case.
Small point of information, I checked all of the parcels, all of them get order bills. So that suggests to me either in the water district.
I have a teeny, teeny little map, so I'm sure if that was blown up, maybe there's like the edge of a parcel that maybe had been switched, but I don't think in the long run, it's actually gonna impact the development that's proposed before you right now. So unless they decide to do something crazy, don't do it.
No, we're not.
I don't think that it's gonna be an issue, but I did, again, wanna raise it, make it part of the record that it was looked into, and that would be the situation should arise at some point.
I understand.
No craziness here.
Is it right, Jim?
No, I'm not, yes.
Tell me, anything else under your scope?
Not with regard to what was submitted, just next steps, I can tell you.
Next step is determination of significance, right?
Well, what I would suggest, since it's a part three, is that you authorize the drafting of a negative declaration, or if you choose to do a positive declaration after those been submitted.
I don't think, I mean, I look over the document, I'm gonna say, it consists of positive, so, so I think that, I don't.
And the only reason I say to authorize the drafting is that when you get this much information, you wanna make sure that any mitigation that they've already, any impacts that you've identified that they've addressed are included, and any mitigation measures that they've already talked about, including, are all brought forward, so nobody has to try and search and find them and say, oh, it wasn't part of it, etc., it's better to have that.
Yeah, it's all in one.
In one place.
In one place, instead of having to do three different documents to look for everything.
Yeah, and I'll provide a draft to the applicant before it's called.
So I will offer a motion to have council adjutant create an authorization for a neck pack. I guess that, that will.
You gotta make me second question.
Any questions? All on favor?
Aye.
That, that was it, that's like a huge step for the board, so they're probably gonna be.
Very exciting.
Glass of champagne.
Will that be possible to put on the twenty-first, just for you, because you typically have?
I don't want to say yes, I don't want to say no. I'm trying not to be three-hour meetings anymore, but I don't know, I have a lot going on, so it's relatively small.
I appreciate it. So we just, we would like to get to the 40.
Oh, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. If you have anything, if you notice a problem, I recommend it begin. As you receive correspondence from the village department, if you receive the draft EIS from the Adalon Hotel, we have forty-five days to data submission to act on that, whether accepted or to the back of the petition.
Determine whether it is adequate for public review.
So, I would just like to offer a motion to hold the meeting on March sixth, March sixth, and offer a motion to schedule a special meeting to review the EIS for that one hotel on March sixth. A second, a second, a second, a second. Any questions? All on favor?
Aye.
And I will offer a motion of, a second, a second. That everyone wants to jump on, a second, all on favor?
Aye.